Public safety.
Infrastructure.
Housing solutions.
Economic vitality.
And community activation.
We'll dig into the city of Colorado Springs Strategic Action Doing Plan.
And should we be paying our city council a living wage?
Next, on Loving the Springs, the podcast that celebrates the best of Colorado and Manitou Springs and strives to elevate the rest.
This is Studio 809 Podcasts, informing, connecting, and empowering the residents of the Pike's Peak Region.
I'm Dave Gardner.
And I'm Al Brody.
We're coming to you from the Studio 809 Community Podcast Studio at The Next Us, a professional cooperative environment for small businesses in downtown Colorado Springs.
We're recording this episode on January 20th, 2025. Still looking for a third co-host. Email us at studio809podcasts@gmail.com.
Yep, auditions are open. Hey, Al, in this episode, we're going to review the mayor's strategic plan for 2025 and offer some editorial comments, and that'll be the lion's share of this episode. But first, you know, there was an important meeting just this past Saturday that I want to chat briefly about.
Okay.
So what happened is on Saturday, the 18th of January, the League of Women Voters of the Pike's Peak Region held a community conversation, and the subject was city council pay. Should we give city council actual pay? Or some people think it would be a pay increase, and we can talk about that. Or is everything just fine the way it is? And they invited current council president Randy Helms to be on the panel, multiple-term former council member and council president Richard Skorman, Yolanda Avila, who is outgoing city councillor, was supposed to be on the panel, but she couldn't get in because of some technical issues, and then former councillor Tim Lee. So they had them on the panel, and they had almost a two-hour conversation about this. And the impression I get is that there are some people in town who really feel like it's time to put on the ballot a charter amendment to provide better pay for city councillors. Interestingly, the Gazette has been running a poll to see what the people that are looking at the front page of the Gazette online think. And as of the 19th of January, 49.2% thought council pay should be increased. 43.3% thought it should not be. And then the rest were unsure. A lot of stats were shared in this meeting about a lot of cities in Colorado and other parts of the country that are of similar size, and it's pretty shocking how much their city council members get paid. And lastly, the mayor of Colorado Springs is paid about $130,000 a year, and county commissioners in El Paso County are making $150,000 a year.
Some of those salaries seem appropriate for the jobs that they're accomplishing. But we got to remember that years ago, starting with Mayor Bach, we switched to a strong mayor form of government.
I'll never forget.
And at that point, we basically stripped the city council, our city council, of any power that they had. So they still meet in the same room and talk to the same people in the same way as if they still have the power. But the reality is they don't. We used to have a city manager who got the pay. That person made a serious salary, a competitive salary, basically like a CEO. Not that they made a CEO salary, but they made a real salary, kind of like what you have at the helm of our utilities board. Not board, but the...
I don't think it was that much, though, was it?
That's a big salary. It's over a quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah, I think the city manager was making more like what our mayor is making now.
The city manager, but I'm talking about the utility CEO.
Yeah, there's serious money there.
There is, and I'm not knocking that, but you have expectations of people who have serious experience. When we're looking at city council, we're looking at a responsible citizen that is willing to spend their time listening to constituents, the rest of the residents, and say, this is what the residents believe. So you're sharing it. 49% believe there should be more pay. There's something to that, but I don't think most people in the city understand what the pay is for or what the pay will get. If you want somebody with real competence that's going to say, should I be on city council? Or should I be in whatever job I happen to be in? $100,000 at this point really isn't a lot of money if you have expectation of somebody who can publicly speak, who can get themselves into every kind of situation in the city and not mess it up. So act adult, act professionally, act as a representative of the city. You're expecting a lot from a person. This is a high-level manager. You wouldn't expect that from a lot of people. So if we're going to go to a pay model, then we have to expect a lot from people. Whereas if we just go with competence and allow the people, because this, this community, because of the military and a few other reasons, we have an older section of the community, there are people with maturity, experience, competence, and a love for the city. We're talking loving the springs, a love for the city that are willing to do it for free. Because the salary that we like to refer to it as is a stipend. It's a dry cleaning stipend because we expect people to look professional when they sit on the dais.
Well, I don't think they refer to wardrobe at all in that, but you're talking about the $6,250 a year.
Right, but that's, that's the expectation.
But that's about what it covers is maybe, it doesn't even cover your mileage.
No, no, it's just there so that people aren't taking a lot of money out of their pocket just to show up.
Yeah, well, let me play devil's advocate, and really devil's advocate, because I'm going to share what I really think about this, because we disagree. One is, man, I'll never forget when we went to the strong mayor form of government. I think that was a big mistake.
Absolutely. I still regret it.
Yep, so we agree on that. That's great. And maybe one day we can return to the prior system, and that would be smart. But we're stuck right now with what we've got, but I disagree that that took all of the council's power away. The council still has budget approval. The council still makes virtually final decisions about a lot of land use issues in town, annexations and things like that.
Well, we can start with annexations if you'd like. David Engrich, an urban planner, famous guy in my studies, said that the purpose of a city is to reduce the distance between interchanges, recreational, social, and commercial. Reduce the distance between interchanges. That's the purpose of a city. So if that's the purpose of a city, which I wholeheartedly think it is, the entire life that I spent growing up in New York City, New York City didn't annex any new land. It just stayed as New York City. But in the short time that I've been in Colorado Springs, we annexed a piece of land the size of Manhattan. That's pretty significant. That's where 2 million people live.
Yeah.
And we did it like it's no big deal.
And the people making that decision were making, they weren't even making $6,250 a year at the time that decision was made.
No, so...
So you got what you paid for back then.
You have people that don't really know what they should be doing. And I go back to what is the purpose of a city? So if we're going to be a city, then we should be selling land like Denmark selling Greenland if that actually happens. Like, do we really need this block of ice up there? Or banning Louis France? Do we really think that we have the capability to keep taxes low and continue to build out? We just bought a new fire engine, which is great. It's fantastic. I think that's a great move, but we're building things that we can't even protect.
Well, we're going pretty far down the rabbit hole. It is tempting, but we should have a deeper conversation about that because I don't disagree about a lot of that. But anyway, so I disagree. I think that the council does have some serious responsibilities and some authority, less than they used to have. But also, I think it's pretty clear. I've interfaced with city councillors a lot in my local activism over the last 20 years. And so what I've observed is the ones that take it seriously and do their best, that's pretty full-time.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so it takes over their life. And what that means is that means that if you're a young person, if you're not retired or independently wealthy, it's really not an option for you to run for city council and do a good job. If you ran and got the job, you would have to have kind of phoned it in because you'd have to keep showing up for work in order to pay your bills. I think that we would get some real benefit from having some younger perspective on the council and some people who aren't independently wealthy. You know, right now, there's just this preponderance of old retired white guys, a lot. You know, we've been improving on that. But I'd like to see more women. I'd like to see more people of color. I'd like to see more youth and more socioeconomic diversity. Wouldn't you? And right now, the system prevents that.
Well, I don't know where that number has to be to actually attract up-and-coming young people. Because who else would we want? Would we want some deadbeat young person just because they're young? Or do we want the brightest and the best to fill that position? And if you were 28, 35, 40, 22, and you were one of the brightest and the best, do you really want to sit in a position on a council that can be easily vetoed by the mayor in this situation? Or do you want some serious power to do the things you want to do? And if you do, then you work for the city. You work for the city staff, and you do the things. But the council is an advisory board. It's not really directing much. That's why we had a city manager, and the city manager would take the heat for the decisions that you make.
Yeah, now we've got this awful system where we have to pay the mayor a lot, and then the mayor has to make a political appointment for somebody else who we have to pay a lot because the mayor can't step in and run a city.
Bingo.
Yeah, it's just insane.
We want what we had, the optics of what we had, and we want to keep it simple so that the industry with the most power locally can have a serious influence on the decisions of the decision maker, in this case, the strong mayor. That way, that industry only has to buy one voice and not influence the majority of council.
That's why they conned us into doing this.
It is why. So accept what it is. That's our life. And I don't think that's different in other places. Maybe the industry is somewhat different in other cities. But there's always an overly influential group that drives the decisions for the entire community. That's reality.
Well, this isn't the last you'll hear about this. I want to, first of all, let you know that if you're interested in hearing or seeing that meeting that you might have missed on Saturday, that's easy to do. It's out there now as an episode of another Studio 809 podcast that I'm really proud of, Making Democracy Work. Latest episode has it.
It's extremely well done. I appreciate it listening to it.
Yeah, and you can watch it if you want on Link of Women Voters of the Pike's Peak Region YouTube channel. If you go to studio809podcast.com and find your way to the latest Making Democracy Work podcast post, you'll find links to both the audio and the video. And I expect that there'll be more conversation going forward about it. It's not something that's going to be on the ballot this April. It would be on the ballot if it gets to the ballot next November or later than that. Who knows?
My only caution to our listeners is that as you listen to that podcast, why is there no mention of the switch from the city council, city manager, to the strong mayor form of government? Because that's a significant jump. And would you feel the same way if you understood that jump? Because I don't think most people do.
Well, there you go. Like I said when we opened, I want to spend most of this episode talking about the 2025 Strategic Action Doing Plan. On January 9th, Mayor Mobulati of Colorado Springs revealed that and also gave a report on how 2024 went. And just to sort of get us started, I just want to play a brief clip from the Behind the Springs podcast, which the city produces. Their most recent episode, they interviewed the mayor, and so he kind of does a good job of introducing this action plan.
Let's hear it.
All right.
I want to share the services that our residents say set were the most important. Maintenance of our major city streets, efforts to reduce crime, maintenance of city parks, and approach to managing homelessness. We hear you, we hear you, we hear you.
Those are top priorities for residents.
Those are top priorities for residents, and we are putting those into action, those priorities into action already.
And he was actually referring to the results of a survey that the city did.
Right.
You were aware of the survey?
Yes.
Okay, it was done, I think, in the summer of 2024, pretty broad and statistically valid. And we'll put a link in the show notes to that survey, Al. You'll want to look at it. It's pretty interesting. So it showed what's most important to the citizens, and the mayor is really, he tries to be pretty data-driven, so he really wants to make sure his strategic plan responds to what's most important to the citizens. And the safety of our roads is high on the list.
As it should be, since we just set a new record for traffic fatalities in the city. At a time when cars are safer, that's construction of cars is safer than it's ever been. The amount of technology that we put into cars, we should be having fewer and fewer deaths but because of the way that we tolerate the behavior on the road. And this is nationwide. As I travel around, this is nothing unusual. Street racing has become as commonplace as stopping at a stop sign, which is not so commonplace anymore.
Yeah, and you know, I'm not going to do my broken record thing today, but you'll be hearing from me about this all the time, about what we can do to take back our streets. But you know what citizens were most happy about? The number one thing they were satisfied with was snow removal. They thought the city was doing a great job at that, which is interesting just because we've just, you know, been through our second pretty big snowstorm of the season so far. Yeah, and sometimes that's challenging. So it's, it's good that they're happy with that. They're not happy with the condition of the roads. And we've talked about that.
People will never be happy with the condition of the roads, but the way that you start to fix that is recognizing the condition, which the city has done a really good job of. The status of the roads, they're on it. They know where the problems are, and they know how much budget they have to contend with it. What they don't have is a plan, since we're talking about strategic doing plan, of do we build new roads as we annex more land and build out? Or do we take care of the roads that we already can't take care of?
Yeah, good point. So under public safety in the 2025, I'm just going to kind of go through the list, and Al, I invite you to highlight anything that pops out at you. Leverage and Implement Technology to Improve Public Safety Efforts. I'm glad to see that, and I think that's a big one because I think if we really can get the police department, in this case, I'm going to focus on the police department, if we can really get them to focus on what technology they haven't yet taken advantage of, I think we can probably find ways to make it much quicker to do a traffic stop so that the police have time to do a better job of enforcing our traffic laws.
I believe it's this year that Ford Motor Company has put the data that they have in the OBD port, the onboard diagnostic port on our cars. We all have them in the newer cars. That data is available, I think, real-time to the police. So when there's a traffic stop, we can basically scan the VIN. We can download the OBD port, which we should be able to. I don't know if that's a Fourth Amendment violation, illegal search and seizure, but if you've pulled somebody over and you can ask them a question, do you know how fast you were going? You should also be able to ask the OBD port.
How fast were they going?
Do you know how fast you were going? And the OBD port will say, yes, I do. And it will show how fast it was going. And then when the opportunity to have your fair trial in court, you will have the OBD port to prove that you weren't speeding, or that maybe you were, or that you actually did brake check that truck that hit you, because that's in the data in the OBD port.
There would have to be a physical connection with the port, right?
We do it at AutoZone. I'm not picking on, on that part store, but you can pick up a reader.
That's a neat idea, but it just makes the traffic stop longer if the cop has to connect to the port.
That comes down pretty quickly, and we're talking electronics. We're not talking, you know, somebody writing it.
It might be a good idea to require that as evidence if somebody wants to dispute the police officer's observation of their speed. If they can't present the data from their car that shows they were driving at the speed limit, then...
Remember how we started this conversation. The item is leverage and implement technology to improve public safety efforts. We had the worst year on record in Colorado Springs for fatalities. We have the data in every car, pretty much. There's some older cars that don't have it. It's there. It's not like we have to buy something. It's there.
Yeah.
So they do it when there's a fatality. The police will do it in their investigation. So this isn't something that's not tried. This is something we already do.
Okay.
So maybe there's a sequence like you were going over 130 miles an hour, and the person wants to fight that. Like, here's the OBD port. You're a menace to society, driving at that speed.
Yeah.
So using that technology, to me, sounds like, yeah, sure. So that's one.
Yeah, I'd love to find a way.
We had the red light cameras in a lot of intersections. They may cause some rear-end collisions because people are actually stopping at the lights. But those are usually much less severe than the actual crashes in the intersection.
Yeah.
So if the goal is, and the goal was, when I dropped out of things for a while, vision zero. Zero fatalities in the state of Colorado by 2050. We're already at 2025. This was 10 years ago we adopted this, and we've gotten worse.
It's almost like climate change.
So, you know, it's like an airplane coming in on final, and instead of getting closer and closer to the ground, it keeps climbing. You're not going to land. You're never going to get there. And I think we have the technology, we have the ability, and we have the reluctance of many people in the community to have these technologies because they too, all of us, can be bad actors. And we don't want to get caught doing what we think is, oh, I just ran that red light, nobody was around. Or I didn't completely stop at that stop sign. So, but what's the big deal?
Let's see. Explore improvements in staffing, technology, training, and call management processes to reduce police call center response delays. That seems like a noble aspiration.
I think the expectation, and it is my expectation because I have called 911, is you call and somebody answers. It doesn't ring three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Somebody just answers. Maybe they say, hold on.
Yeah.
But they answer, so you know, okay, do I deal with the emergency that I'm calling about? Or do I wait for an answer? I mean, you get to that point where you're triaging whether you should stay on the phone waiting for an answer. So somehow, it has to be instant that that answer really comes up quickly. And understand that Friday night, Saturday night, when you have more trouble than usual, a snowstorm, where there are a lot of calls unusually, so you have to staff for that. And I would like to see that as a priority.
Don't you think the answer is just to outsource it to call centers in India and give them some good scripts? And then we can have a lot more people answering the emergency calls at very low wages?
No, I don't.
That would be the ultimate scraping of the bottom of the barrel in this stupid...
You know, when, when you do have an emergency and you do get a very professional person at the other end for the 911 call, and they walk you through exactly what they need to know to help you, it's a beautiful thing. And I don't think we can worry about having too much some of the time, as long as we have that when we really need it. Because it's an emergency that we're trying to contend with. And sometimes those could be diverted when you hear that somebody's chicken is stuck in the coop or something. Some low-level emergency, but not life and death of a human that really needs to be dealt with immediately.
So the trick is going to be how that diversion is handled. That can be mishandled poorly, or it can be handled in some brilliant way that will really help this problem.
That would be searching for that brilliant way.
Yeah, that's worth looking for, that's for sure. I noticed it really popped out at me under public safety, establishing an advanced evacuation plan.
One of the things we don't talk about in this community, I think most city council members and the mayor knows, that fire is not our biggest threat in this community. It's flooding, damage from flooding. And there are more houses in flood-prone places than fire-prone places, although we worry about fire. I was evacuated in Rock Remen during the Waldo Canyon fire. And the initial response was awful. Didn't really understand evacuation. The police didn't really get it. We hadn't practiced. And I was just in Los Angeles the morning of the start of the Pacific Palisades fire.
Are you kidding?
I was there, and I saw the start of it. And I thought, this just reminds me of Waldo Canyon. When they responded to the fire, they didn't find it, and they said, we'll come back in the morning. And this one, it was the morning. It may have started in the evening, but my first glimpse of the smoke and the flames, I was that close. I was in Marina Del Rey where you can actually see it. But I had the same feeling that for a week, kind of like the Waldo Canyon fire, as it was burning, they had warnings of, we are going to have a major Santa Ana wind event like we have not seen in a long time, if ever. For over a week. And I'm thinking, wow, if that was me, and it was me, I'm planning on getting out of here. And that morning, I looked and I thought, Santa Ana has traditionally come out of the east northeast. And I was heading north up the coast, and I could have taken the Pacific Highway, or I could have gone on the interstate. And I said, I am not putting myself in front of dropping palm fronds because that's what I was really worried about. I didn't think fire at that level that early. But when I saw the flames, so I had already decided not to go Pacific Coast Highway because of the winds.
So you had your evacuation plan.
I did, and I evacuated. I got out of that area, and I have pictures. I can share pictures with you of the flames and the smoke as I drove by it. And it was just getting bigger, fast. It was extremely windy. If you've ever been on I-25, when there's a serious crosswind, that's what this felt like. Part of that is my experience with evacuation here. And I was in the Air Force. I was stationed at Cape Canaveral and Patrick Air Force Base, and in my three years, we evacuated three times.
For hurricanes?
For hurricanes, completely shut down the base. Why? Because of the Homestead situation. So Homestead was another Air Force base, and they had a hurricane bearing down on them. And the base commander, the guy that makes the big bucks, said, they never hit here. They always go around here, which was true. Everybody believes the hurricane never hits here. It always goes someplace else. Which, if you've got 10 years of experience, you can probably justify that because it's true. It always goes someplace else until it comes to you. And they lost a bunch of F-16s, a bunch, like 20 of them, a bunch. $25 million a pop back then was a lot of money. So the Air Force says, we're not doing that again. That doesn't look good for the taxpayer. So Patrick had the opposite response. It was like hurricanes coming, we're going to batten down, and we're going to prepare to evacuate every single time. And they did. They were prepared, and then at some point, they pushed the button, total base evacuation. And that happened three times in three years. So I have experience of how you practice. I appreciated it. You don't always get it right, and you have to understand that people will say, you're doing too much because prevention is a guess to what might happen.
Yeah.
And you can't prove what didn't happen because of your efforts. I think this is a fairly prudent community if they understood what we're doing. So yeah, you don't have to just have a plan for it. You got to practice. People have to know, how am I going to be informed? What kind of warning am I going to get? So Red Fire Danger Days, I don't think most people take them seriously, but you should understand that this might mean that you're going to be evacuated today. That's really what it means. And when we have new housing developments and commercial developments, we haven't really seen the hydraulics, the way the water will move, the stormwater, until we actually see it. We have engineers that have predicted it, and we have developers who have built the infrastructure that is supposed to accommodate that. But until we actually see it, we don't know. And we have a lot of people living in, we don't know. And if they're not prepared, especially those people that are downstream, because some people will sandbag their place at the top of the hill, which may protect their home, but it puts more pressure on the homes below them.
It's probably a lot more complicated to evacuate for a flood situation because you need to go uphill. And for most of us, that looks like you're headed toward the dead ends. You're not headed down to the interstate.
You need to have a practice. In a lot of communities, coastal communities, there are tsunami evacuation routes. They're signed. This is the way you would go if you had to get out of here. But from a home standpoint, you might need to know if you live along a creek, where would you run to? Because you may not have an opportunity to do anything else. But yes, we need to prepare for that. And I think the community has to understand, you're going to be involved in this. Otherwise, it's not going to work.
Well, I think there's been a lot more conversation about evacuation plans. Well, I think there's been a lot more conversation about evacuation plans, mostly in light of the increased density projects on the west side that citizens have been trying to find some reason for the city to not approve these higher density apartment and condo developments. And they blamed, you know, the city doesn't have a good fire evacuation plan. You put this many people, this many escape vehicles in this part of town, and if we have a fire, we're in deep trouble.
Then this is perfect, that we need to practice, because the purpose of a city is to decrease the interchanges, which means increase density. So if we're gonna increase density, this becomes more and more of an issue.
So it sounds like the city's kind of taking note, and I think we're gonna see more of that. Because I think the city was kind of dismissive of the citizen requests for evacuation plans, for, especially for planned development.
Well, you and I had fire drills in school. I don't know if they still have the same type of fire drills in school now. We have active shooter drills and things like that.
Yeah.
But whatever the real threat is, practicing how you will deal with it is key. If you don't practice it, then the only thing you will do is panic. And when we panic, we do nothing.
Yeah.
And that's not the right answer. There's still 36 people, I think, that are unaccounted for in Southern California. So if you think about it, you're an older couple or something, and you may not have any other connections, and your house is completely gone, and so are their bodies. Nobody knows about you.
Yep, so that'll be a good thing. Continue wildfire mitigation activities, of course.
There's a couple of good examples in Southern California, Pacific Palisades, that had steel roofs with no vents, which is, if you look at a lot of the steel roofs, these modern steel roofs, I'm not really sure what they do with the fence, but they're not on the roof. So there's no way for embers to get into the house. And a lot of concrete, which is a harsh way to build for a lot of people. But those houses are still standing amongst many houses that are not standing. And I know of one, and there may be more, this one is in Rock Remen. It is a firewise community, okay? It is recognized for its mitigation efforts, proactive mitigation efforts. And one of the houses, at least in it, has a shake shingle roof.
No way.
Yeah, way. So the fact that, that any community could recognize a group of houses, a neighborhood, as firewise, and have a shake shingle roof, which is basically a fuse, as we saw in the Waldo Canyon fire or the other fire, it, it's ludicrous to have that.
Crazy.
But those are the types of things, is we need fire preventers instead of firefighters.
Well, in our neighborhood, we definitely take advantage of that. We get a visit every year from the fire department to...
And that's good. They should be very directive in, you know, if you have to have 100 feet. Very few people have 100 feet. But the houses that do, and I have friends, Bob and Ann Smith, during the Waldo Canyon fire, all the houses around them burned, but theirs did not. The firefighters actually used their property as a base to fight the fire.
Because they had a serious defensible perimeter.
Yes. And that house is still there. If anybody wants to see it, I would gladly show you which house that is. They don't live there anymore.
Fascinating. Another objective, implement effective strategies to reduce injury and damage caused by traffic crashes. Why not just reduce traffic crashes?
This is very low hanging fruit. We have many, I said 10%, cars in this city that have outdated tags on their licenses. That is breaking the law, and it's easy to capture. And chances are, the people who have that may have other things. So if you want to start doing things that will make a difference, go after the people who have expired tags. When you do a stop, if somebody doesn't have insurance, which we know, 1/3 of drivers in this city, maybe it's 30%, but it's close.
Wow.
Do not have insurance. So we pay for, those of us with insurance, under an uninsured motorist protection. That insurance cost should go down to zero eventually, if we end drivers not having insurance, which they're supposed to have. This isn't please get insurance. This is you must have insurance. We should be able to stop that. In New York City, you have to prove that you have insurance, and when the insurance is stopped, that information goes right back to the DMV, which goes to the police. So you're already a criminal as soon as your insurance is no longer valid. We have that technology. Let's use it.
Implement photo speed enforcement program to help reduce traffic injuries caused by speeding. You remember, I think we talked briefly about this, that the city does have a plan to go beyond the red light cameras, and to actually put these cameras to take pictures of speeders on these bigger thoroughfares, and we'll start issuing citations for them, for those speeding infractions.
Well, the beauty of time, especially when we break it into a year, is we have the data from 49 traffic fatalities in Colorado Springs in 2024. We have it. So you take that information, where those things happened, maybe it was 49 totally distinct locations. Or maybe there's some trends where a few people are getting killed in one spot.
Yeah.
And that's where you apply the technology first. And you start to change behavior. You start to change the things that at least have recently caused fatalities. And then you adapt, because the next year, and they already do this, they're supposed to, they being traffic engineering and the police, move these things about to do that, to prioritize the dangerous areas. Instead of, we're gonna put it on every street, or we're gonna put it on the big streets. Big streets are not necessarily dangerous. But for whatever reason, some places are dangerous.
Yeah.
That's what you gotta focus on, is where is bad things happening?
Good point. Yep, I hope they do that. Yeah. Now here's one that really gets me excited. Enhance community engagement with information sharing about traffic safety. I want to raise my hand. I'd be glad to help, because as you know, part of my crusade is to re-normalize driving the speed limit and driving courteously in this town.
So I served on an organization, which I believe is still there, I haven't checked, called Drive Smart.
Yeah.
And the biggest focus of that was the high school challenge, which was to get high school students to wear seatbelts and be focused on safety. So just improve seatbelt usage. And you would be surprised, because they each would do their own surveys, that even a school like Air Academy, where you have to go through a military gate, where one of the things you must do is wear a seatbelt, to get through the gate, by the time they got up to the school where the survey was being done, they would have taken their seatbelts off. Or maybe they drove through the gate without the seatbelt on, and they just got away with it. But even they didn't have 100% compliance.
Wow.
And some places, for whatever reason, usually the more rural schools, their compliance is lower. But with all the bells and whistles and warnings and lights, you would think that in 2025, wearing a seatbelt is just taken for granted, that you just do it.
Yeah.
You don't move your car without it. You just do it. But yet, that's not a thing. And half of the people, I think this will be true, I haven't seen the data, half of those 49 were not wearing a seatbelt. So the greatest thing we can do, and that's why Drive Smart focused on that, was get people to wear seatbelts. You may still have the crash, but hopefully you won't die.
I had to know that was still a problem in this day and age.
And 17% of them, if the numbers are right, I'm guessing, were DUI related deaths. So that's another one, is drinking and driving is a bad combination. It just doesn't work. And now we have the ability impaired by other factors, distraction and other chemicals.
Okay, objective 2.1, expand safe, connected, and reliable multimodal options to make it easier to get around.
More power to them. Yeah, we've been talking, connecting the city's multi-use path in ways where you can actually get places. And it's interesting that the greatest system in the country, bar none, is Boulder, Colorado. So we don't have to go far to see a system that if you want to get across Boulder, place to place, it's probably faster by bike than it is by car.
Wow, that's great. I had no idea.
And the reason for that is grade separated interchanges. And that is a tunnel or a bridge where the bicyclists, the pedestrians, do not have to cross the street. And if you do that, they have over 100, and we have about a dozen. And they're 1/4, 1/8.
Something like that, yeah.
Land area as us. So if that's the case, then the greatest thing we could do, for the least amount of money, is make it really easy to pop up places by bike, more than anything else. Buses, if you understand the city, there's urban, there's semi-urban, and then there's the suburban parts of the city. And you can see the development. You can look at the grid of the city. And as that grid changes, and then the grid is totally destroyed, you can't run a bus system effectively without a grid. It just doesn't work. But that's where we try to run it. And everybody thinks the bus system stinks. It's not the bus system, it's the way we built the city.
Yeah, virtually impossible to have a good bus system with that design. Yeah, which is too bad. Nevertheless, increase frequency of existing fixed route bus service, develop a plan for a new downtown transit center, initiate enhancement efforts to mass transit.
Right. We're gonna do things that we know don't work. It's like putting in the free shuttle along Tahome. I've been to one of my favorite cities in the country, and most people have never been. It's Columbus, Ohio. And they do what we do with a bus, with golf carts. And they have ambassadors driving the golf carts that literally pick people up, take them to their destination, custom. And it works. It works really well. So running a system that is empty most of the time is foolish. It's spending a lot of money because we said, we're gonna do it, and ridership will increase. Well, if you really want to take care of people that want to ride, we have the technology. We have apps. You could have a few golf carts running up and down Tahome, the central business district. And you could park in other places and, and get a ride exactly where you want to go, and get a ride back. And it wouldn't take that much. It's pretty easy.
Never thought of that. Okay, so you're not a fan of these lists I just did?
I think that's a waste of time.
How fascinating. All right, you heard it here first on Loving the Springs. Might be on to something there. I think you'll like this one. 2.2D, begin the park system master plan process. Or maybe you won't.
We've been master planning this forever. I, I don't know of a time when we haven't master planned. And if you take a look at what Parks has accomplished, it's really well done in accordance with their Parks master plan. If anybody deserves kudos, I think the Parks Department does, for doing what they planned to do. So, yeah, okay, we're already doing that one.
Hmm, okay.
Kudos.
Continue exploring the COS Creek Plan opportunity. There's an effort that's being amplified right now to do something with Monument and Fountain Creeks, especially around the confluence. But along those creeks within the city, to make a lot of improvements. I mean, it's kind of a mess right now. And some people see that it could be a real nice amenity. So, from the economic development standpoint, there are people who say, geez, look at San Antonio's Riverwalk, or even Pueblo's Riverwalk.
I was gonna say, look right here in Pueblo.
Yeah, that's a pretty nice place. It's
Extremely nice.
It's a lot of concrete, though. It's not exactly good management of an ecosystem necessarily, but...
It's urban. You have to combine the two, but yeah.
Yeah. And in fact, I want to refer people to the Peak Environment podcast, the episode that has just been published of Peak Environment. We got a glimpse of that from Jan Martin and Chris Lieber, who are managing this new nonprofit entity that's shepherding that. And then also in March, the Peak Alliance for a Sustainable Future is going to be holding a hybrid in-person and virtual event to talk in more depth about Fountain Creek issues. And that'll also be a future episode of the Peak Environment podcast. So this is something that we're gonna make it easier to follow at Studio 809 Podcast.
So I want to take credit for something.
Okay.
I spent a lot of time on something called complete streets. So when we build a street, it accommodates all users.
I've been wanting to bring up that subject every episode. We should talk more about that.
Yeah. Since I'd been working on that, and I am a fan of our trail system, which is basically sewer line access roads throughout the city. That's our trail system. That's why we have a trail system. There's nothing wrong with it, but that's why they are where they are. And it's nice, because they're along a creek. But I, I will take credit for this, coined the term complete creeks. And it's the same concept. It's build the creeks, the urban creeks, in a way for all users. And nature is a user. You have animals, you have people who are unhoused, you have people riding bikes, pedestrians, children playing. You have all those things.
Yeah.
And you have to consider all those things. That's complete creeks. But that term, and Jerry Cordova, who is heavy into the, the waterworks in the city, would confirm that, that yeah, he actually did come up with that term.
It's a great idea. Well, I think we want to hear that term a lot more as they go through this plan. And of course, the plan is not just to pretty it up and gentrify it, but also to improve the water quality and improve the way our extra water gets moved.
Extra water. You do realize that the Fountain Creek Watershed Authority exists because Pueblo was adamant and fearful of the extra water that is coming back downstream from the stuff that we pump up from the Pueblo reservoir in the Southern delivery system.
Because we've paved over all of Colorado Springs, and all that water rushes into Fountain Creek and down the creek.
Well, but we're taking water from downstream, bringing it upstream, which is an unusual thing to do.
Yeah.
And then it has to go back downstream. So there is truly, unlike other communities, extra water.
Yeah, there's a lot more water in that creek than historically there was. Yeah, so I'm hoping that the current thinking, in fact, I chimed in on the Sustainability in Progress lunch, and that the Peak Alliance for a Sustainable Future held with Chris Lieber and Jan Martin. And I, in the Q and A period, I kind of raised my hand and said, I just think, I'll just suggest that for every engineer they put on the project, they make sure they put a biologist on the project too. Because I don't want just a lot more concrete. I think we've learned not to just get the water out of town as fast as we can. That is not the solution.
It all comes down to land use. If you don't concrete it, then you leave it natural, and that means you don't build on it. So that's the rub, is how little can you have left? And Los Angeles is a good example, where the Los Angeles River is completely concrete, completely. There is no natural part of it.
You know, we've barely scratched the surface of the mayor's 2025 strategic action doing plan, but we've got kind of an episode in the can here. We probably should stop, take a break, and maybe in the next episode, we might maybe try to finish going through this.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a worthwhile thing. I think we both have opinions about it, as many people do. It's just a plan. I haven't seen the metrics, the meaningful measures of merit that we should be measuring. And people should see, you know, instead of having a sign that says, 1A paid for this road repaving, we should have that dashboard sign someplace that says, the condition of the roads in the city is actually getting better or getting worse. For a long time, it was getting worse. 1A has actually improved things. Not that they're getting better, but that they're getting worse slower. That's improvement, and people need to know that. But until you see the roads actually getting better, and maybe we are at that point, the last time I checked, we were not. We were slowing down the deterioration, which is positive.
Yeah, we should take a hard look at the metrics and see if we've got the right stuff being measured.
But I think people should have access to that and know that, okay, my tax dollars are making a difference.
All right. Well, Al, as usual, it's been a blast. Thanks for sharing your pearls of wisdom with us.
You are welcome, and I hope they are pearls of wisdom worth sharing. Because sometimes they could just be, he has an opinion, and like everything else, it stinks. Anyway, thanks for listening to Loving the Springs. Follow this podcast to keep up on
What's going on.
What's going well.
And what's going wrong.
Share it with your friends, family, and colleagues too.
And be sure to visit studio809podcast.com to check out all of our great community podcasts. You'll find your new favorite local podcast there.
We'll catch you next time.
In the Pike speak region, there's no shortage of activities, whether you're experiencing breathtaking parks or magnificent works of art, if you're getting fashionable at a film festival, or fresh at a farmer's market. If you want to hear the sweet sounds of a symphony, or the smooth shred of a Stratocaster, look no further than Peak Radar, your one stop shop for all events in the Pike speak region, your free source for viewing and posting events. So no matter how you engage with our beautiful region, visit peakradar.com and get plugged into the peak.